Lucky tonight to have these two ladies talking to us on a very, very important and timely topic in regards to the, you know, what's going to happen with the Affordable Care Act and what's being proposed and Medicaid waiver blocks and just all the scary things that are possibly in our future. But these two ladies, this is Katie Bentley with the DED Council, and they're going to tell you more about themselves as time goes on. And Estelle Beard, who's with the Ark of Kentucky.
Like this room has a lot of people who have either had a waiver or want to learn more. So this is definitely Medicaid, definitely impacts that waiver.
Estelle Beard, and I'm the executive director of the Ark of Kentucky. This is my little family up here. My son JB is almost 24, which is extremely hard to believe. And my son Clayton, in the blue shirt, he has Williams Syndrome. He is 21, he just turned 21. So we had a big bash, big 21st birthday party for him. And he's why I do what I do, of course. And then I have two children that I did not birth, but I probably could have. They're just, I mean, my daughter is just like me. People, when we're out and about, everybody says she looks like me, and we just smile and say, yes, thank you very much. My daughter Taylor and my son Cole. My husband Ryan. So great support team, and the reason why I do what I do is my son Clayton. He's on the Michelle P waiver. We were actually one of the first ones to be on the waiver. We were in that first shift of folks that came in on the waivers. I think we're going on maybe year seven now? Do I have that one in there? My husband right here. Yeah. It's been awhile. So he has just come so far, and I'm so grateful for the services and supports that we did get on that waiver. So, Katie, go on then.
Thanks, and come over there. So you can't see Will's face really good.
He has a flicker.
These are the two loves of my life. This is Hallie and Will. And Will has been on the Michelle P waiver since he was about, I guess he was about five. He's 13 now, obviously, something like that. But Hallie has Alzheimer's Syndrome, which is a genetic condition and does not get waiver services. And it causes her to have chronic pain. Will has a seizure disorder for a long period of time, and he has had a lot of struggles. He has intellectual disability, and so he's had a lot of struggles just basically from the seizures because he had to learn how to talk again and walk again and do a lot of life skills. So, but these are the two reasons that I do what I do. And Will has probably carried my life to places I never thought it would be. My husband says that Will definitely kept our life interesting because we've been to Washington DC to testify to safe children's programs. Will's wife helped push the Restriction Seclusion Regulation, which is unfortunate, but he's very proud of that. So if he sees you, the first thing he'll say is, "I helped make a law for little kids." He's very proud. He tells every police officer, "I made a law." So, and I have some great news to share with you that I'm actually heading back to DC on Friday to make a video about Will and about how far he has came, so that we can validate that supporting families really carries us somewhere. Because Will's not on seizure medicine anymore. He hasn't had a seizure in about four years, and he's been off of medication for a little over a year, and he's doing really well. And so, and I'm back to work, and I was off work for seven years to take care of him, and now I'm at the council working on public policy. So that's just a little about that. You want to?
Whatever's happening.
Yeah, someone doesn't have to be in order.
You want me to stand down there? I'll do it.
Can you? You're already plugged in, you can't put it on the big table. It won't break.
No.
Or if we had a clicker.
So, oh, I don't know. I don't have a clicker.
No, we need to keep one in our pocket.
Okay. So this is just a little bit of information about the Developmental Disabilities Network in Kentucky. Can you give us the next slide, yeah? So it's our U-Seds, the DED Council, and Protection Advocacy. Does everybody know what these things are? You all know what a U-Sed is? It's HDI. So the DED Council, of course, is the Commonwealth Council.
A lot of people might not know what HDI is. Human Development Institute in UK. I worked there, so that's why I'm jumping in. But every state has a University Center for Developmental Disabilities, the DED Council, and a Protection Advocacy.
And some states have two U-Seds. We only have one. So these three sister agencies work together to fulfill the DED Act. So very important, if you see the different things that we do, the council funds projects and is supposed to work on initiatives that empower individuals and create change in our state. Some of the things from the past have been the Advocates in Action Program, that used to be the Partners in Policy Making, that's something that Estelle's been a part of.
There's applications over here. We are taking applications for our next class. So if you've never been a part of Advocates in Action, I encourage you to do that. We're both products of Advocates in Action.
That's how we met.
That's how we met. Years, it's been a long time ago.
We're going to say a few years ago.
Yeah.
Just a few. So great work there. Protection Advocacy provides a lot of different services to people. They'll give you information. Sometimes you get legal representation, just depends on what's going on. And then the U-Seds, which is our Human Development Institute, they do a lot of research, are involved in a lot of different projects. There's advisory councils, and like there's a council, we have a council, and it's all people who apply across the state to become members, who help drive the DED Council work. PNA has the Pemmy Board, and they also have a PAD Board. I'm on the PAD Board at PNA. And Jay, you still on the PAD Board? Okay. So the U-Sed, they have a Consumer Advisory Council. So if there's anything that you want to kind of get involved in, that's some good information. We're going to do a Lunch and Learn on all of these things, I think in July. So you'll be able to, if you want to watch the Lunch and Learn, we do those on Tuesdays, the third Tuesday of the month. Then we do them at HDI, but they're also broadcast online. Can you hit the next slide? So Medicaid. Medicaid's super important in Kentucky, especially because of this highlighted part right here. We get 70 cents, and we only put in 30. So we get a lot more than most states. A lot of the states that they call a state of need really only get about 50 cents, and we get a lot more if you think about it. So it started as a partnership between the states and the feds, so everybody has to contribute, but it also creates an opportunity to provide services to people who are poor or who have disability. And the program has really grown. I mean, Kentucky, gosh, we have some great things. It is an entitlement program, so it does include, it's grouped in with Social Security, unemployment, Medicaid, Medicare. They're all grouped together, and that means that you just have to be a citizen. You're granted that if you qualify for it. So there's conversations in a lot of places about not making Medicaid an entitlement program. So who knows what they're going to do with that? We don't have control of that right now, but that's a conversation that's talked about.
And you know, even though we think, a lot of times, you know, you think of stuff that's going on in Kentucky, and you think, oh, you know, there's so much going on. Kentucky, we've really got some great waiver programs here, and that's why we're fighting right now to really keep those. Because I tell families all the time, and they'll say, "Well, I think I'm going to move to Florida." And, you know, my son or daughter's on the Michelle P right now, and I'm like, "No, don't leave." Because once you leave and you leave, you know, you're not going to have that waiver anymore. A lot of families think they're going to move to another state, and they're just going to get the exact same thing there, but...
And even if they do have waivers.
Right.
They do, but then...
You know, the bottom line is...
Exactly.
And sometimes they choose to only provide services to a certain population of people, and you might not fall in that population.
Totally different.
So these are the 20 programs in Kentucky. So EPSDT, K-CHIP, or the one that surprised a lot of people, the Women's Cancer Screening Program. If you go to the next slide, because it's going to be a little bit... So Students to School Health Program, that's really important. I've already seen some schools who are letting their nurses go. That's happening across the state. I picked up a paper when I was out of town over the weekend, and they said, "This district's decided no longer to keep the school nurse." So...
A lot of them are contracting with like primary cares in the community and doing like nurse practitioners that will come to the school once or twice a week. That's the way ours look now.
Yeah, that's what I think they're doing too. So if you look through some of these, the EPSDT program, a lot of kids who don't get services through a waiver, a lot of children get services there. Now, it's my understanding, most of the waivers have rolled to EPSDT, but currently, if you're in the Michelle P waiver, you still can get services under that because the regulation hasn't changed.
Because you're in 21.
I hear 21.
Yep. So, which is interesting, because they want to change it, and they probably will eventually if they stay in the waiver system that we have right now. So K-CHIP, Medicaid Transitions, that is moving from institutional care to community, and some of that money comes in two different pockets in Kentucky, and some of it still exists and some doesn't. So that's really complicated, and a lot of controversy on that issue. Women's Cancer Screening Program, pretty self-explanatory there. Children who are in the custody of PCBS, we're talking about school health. MCOs, all the MCOs, expansion, the Medicaid, case management for children with severe emotional disabilities and adults with mental illness. And then also the ICFs in your nursing homes are all, that's a... So in Kentucky, we have optional services. Consumer with optional services. The waivers are completely optional. They are, we are not required to have them. So when Estelle was talking about Kentucky providing that extra, well, yeah, we have great waiver programs. We really do. If you have a waiver, I said, it's, I know it's a lot of fight, I know people have struggled just to get them and to get the services they need, but they really are valuable. Except my son's in the Michelle P waiver. He was on the home and community-based waiver, and it's definitely important. So we do have those waivers, and they are, again, optional services. And if you're talking to your legislators, they often do not know what these are. When you say waiver, they're hearing 1115, which is that MCO demonstration waiver that the governor's working on, that he wants to change. So when you're talking about a waiver, be sure you tell them which one you have, Michelle P waiver, or home and community-based waiver. You know, make sure you use that language because they don't know what it is.
I had many discussions with families when I would put stuff on Facebook about the waiver program, you know, and how we're fighting to keep the Medicaid waivers. Immediately, they think we're talking about the 1115 waiver, which is, you know, poverty. You know, when you're in poverty and you get the medical card for that.
Do these have a number, like the 1115?
Oh, these are 1915C's. If you go to the next slide, we have some, you know...
I think there's one coming.
There is one on here, though, that talks about...
You want me to go through or just do this slide?
No, we'll just stay on track.
The best one.
The term is...
Yeah, it's coming up.
Okay. Okay. So this is just, I'm sorry, it was a question.
The term that they use is the Medicaid expansion. That's kind of what legislators get, the devin', whoever wants to get rid of. And so, because that brought on a whole group of people that somebody somewhere thinks they're not, should not be getting certified.
So our governor has that 1115 waiver, he has that waiver application, and so he's asking for a waiver to not provide those services to that many people. And so when people hear waiver, it is a waiver through CMS, but they're hearing it as, "That's my waiver, my home and community-based waiver." So just caution you when you're reading stuff on Facebook to pay attention to that because a lot of people are writing about the 1115. Like, for example, the 1115, when the comment period was supposed to close, they left it open because we have more comments on the 1115 waiver than all the other waivers combined in the US. So they left it open. I'm not sure that it's closed yet. So, and one of the big ones that was hot, but most allergy shots, that really, people need those.
They fought and fought and fought and got it put back in. So that just shows you how important your voice is.
Yeah, so...
Because allergy shots are originally taken out of it, and you're not going to get those covered anymore. Put it back in.
So that was interesting, and those comments did get that back in. So just keep in mind that comments are really important. So looking at block grants, and everybody's hearing this language, block grants and per capita cap. A block grant for Kentucky would be, we got a set amount of money, and we wouldn't get any more. Like, it would just, it would not grow. Even though that the services and the need would grow, maybe the number of people would grow, we would only get that amount. It would have to serve everybody that is chosen to be served, because it doesn't mean they can serve everybody. They'll pick a population because they won't be able to serve every person. If they only have, if you only have $20 and it costs $4 to take everybody to the movie, then everybody can't go. That's how, someone just told me that one time, "So everybody can't go to the movie." But this is the movie of life, so that's kind of interesting. But block grants, that's kind of, just to give you an idea, won't grow. Now, per capita cap, it actually counts the people in your state, and there's a couple of different ways these can be looked at too, so you all should know that. Like, they could pick different populations and look at them, even with the block grants. They can say, "We want to cover your population that has intellectual disability," or, they can look at it differently. So, and that has not been decided nor discussed exactly how they want to do it. But looking at per capita cap, if they look at all the people in the state who have disability, and there's even a tiering system where if you're a child or you're an adult, they could get different amounts of dollars, but it doesn't mean that any of those people are going to get services. Because they may decide to only serve people 21 to 28 who have X, Y, and Z disability, and that might be the only population of people that receives services. So just because my son has a disability doesn't mean that he's going to fall in that population of people that are going to get services. So it could grow, because if you have more people that have disability, it could grow, but it doesn't mean those people are going to get any services. So it's definitely, from our standpoint, it's really confusing and it's really difficult, and we don't know what they're going to do with it yet, and there've been a lot of conversations. And like I said, there's so many different ways they could pick under either one. But we do know that legislators are as confused, I think, as we are about some of these things. Because they're saying, "Oh, block grants, that's hospitals." No, that's also optional services. It's also waivers that we use in the community.
The other thing with our legislators, they're all new. So we're not only having to educate them on this, but we're educating them on disabilities. We're educating, they're freshmen, you know, I mean, really, they are.
They're 30 new. We have 30 new.
30 new legislators this year.
We have a lot of new.
This past year.
You're talking about federal?
Nope. Kentucky.
Kentucky. So because of this issue, so whatever happens, remember I said it's a state and federal relationship, their partnership? So whatever the federal decides, Kentucky's going to, it's going to come down to Kentucky and be decided, how much is Kentucky going to put in? Is Kentucky going to put in anything? We don't know. We don't really know how that match is going to be. We don't know what it's going to look like. And if they do, like, what, who's going to get those services? And Kentucky will decide that. That won't be decided on the federal level.
But the federal level will decide this, so that's the thing we need to be advocating for.
Right, you need to be talking to everybody. Everybody. Because there are lots of back conversations behind the scenes that are going on, and don't think that your state legislators don't have relationships with the federal. Those congressmen, there's certain ones that they're definitely having conversations with. I was asking, we were having conversations with the governor's office, and I said, "I'm not sure who across the state is having those good conversations." But that's a good place to be letting them know, too.
And I think a lot of people think, "Well, I'll just wait and hear what happens federally, and then I'll do some advocating here in Kentucky." And that's the wrong approach. You have to start, you know, at the federal level, because it will trickle down to the state level. And how it trickles down determines what we do and how much we advocate at the federal level. So it's so important. I used to not even think, "Oh, well, my voice isn't going to matter." It really makes a difference when we start, especially getting together and as a team and making our voice even louder.
Yes.
Not to get too political, but is that really true? I mean, both our senators and Representative, if you're like Andy Barr, are all on record as being pro-block grants and reducing services and taking everything away, and there's been no sign at all that they're open to any source of discussion about that. I read a paper a couple weeks ago, and Mitch McConnell was hounded as he was walking around. Well, he just happily ignored everybody. So it's hard for me to believe that it really makes a difference, given our representation.
But Andy Barr has some kind of family member that has a disability.
He might just need to be a little more educated.
And he's very supportive. He helped to get legislation, not that I'm in support of this person, but he, anyway. So he did get legislation pushed through that is, that will help people that are drug addicts. And the way, because I called his office a couple of times, and I've also talked about the children that are born prenatally exposed to drugs and alcohol, who are going to need support and services for the rest of their life, which could include these waivers. You know, so if you can link it to something that they might be interested in, they might listen.
Make it personal.
The foster care population in our state. I have a lot of friends who are about, who are adopting medically grown kids. It's a complex.
That is very strong.
So, yeah, so that's, I think, really important. I have a friend who has two kiddos that she's adopted, and I'm like, "We need to be getting you talking to everybody who will listen to you." Because she had, both of them have high medical needs. So, so, I guess we can tell you a little more about, we'll talk a little more about some of the legislative things at the end. So there are four types of waivers, and so this 1915C is what the Michelle P falls under. And so the 1115 is a demonstration project, and that's definitely, see, they want to apply for flexibility. They want to waive some of those people out of the program, so that's a waiver.
This is something really good to walk away here tonight understanding. Because when you're in conversations with people, this is the language you need to use so that, you know, you're explaining it correctly, and I think that's really important because we don't want wrong information to go out, we want the right information to go out.
And you want your legislators to know you're talking about home and community-based waivers and not under the expansion, which is what they're going to be thinking that you're talking about. When I say waiver to them, the first thing I get, honestly, was from many of them was, "Oh, the expansion." No, I'm talking about home and community-based waivers.
And then you have to educate them on that.
Yeah.
And one confusing thing about it is they're kind of all grouped together. They're called Home and Community-Based Services Waiver. So you can say, but I don't know if they would know what HDI is.
No, they don't. They're both one law. But the really important thing is letting them know what that waiver is, means to you, means to the person who's getting it, means to your family. Does it keep you employed? Does it provide them services, get them what they need? That's really important. I'm going to DC to talk about how Will had supports that he needed, how my family had the supports that we needed, so that Will could be seizure-free and I could be employed. Because they don't know how important those things are. So, and I think, I think children are especially getting kind of a shift right now, where they're seeing maybe children don't need services like we think, but I know that my son wouldn't be where he is if he hadn't had services. And I know that. So it's very important. I think it costs the lifespan.
Something you could call the 1115 is when brushier, 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 connect. I mean, that's kind of what that implies.
Well, they're changing a lot of the language with that, and so people are going to think connect is gone, but it's really still here. Right now, it's still here. And so they're working on some of the language with that, and I think, I think it's all confusing. It's just all confusing, and until they get things lined up, I guess everybody probably knows how confusing these new system changes are with the waivers and how many systems we fell through. We actually have a pretty good update on that, we'll give you a little bit. So, and this is just a basic overview of our waivers. Estelle, do you have anything you want to add about these?
I think it's just real important to be familiar with them all. I think a lot of times we're in the Michelle P mode, and we forget that there are others. And it's good to know, especially as you're advocating, it's really good to know, you know, a little bit about each of them so that you're able to share them with people, but then tell your story from how it's helped to benefit you. We've got some examples. I even brought Will's poster, we'll show that in a few minutes. It couldn't get to hang on the wall for some reason, it wouldn't stay up there, but the stories are what is really going to drive it. Because when they see a face of what you're talking about, you know, you can say Michelle P, but they're, first of all, they're going to go, "Who's Michelle P?" So you want to tie that into what, how Michelle P has helped your, you know, your family and your child. I think that's so very important to do that.
For those who don't know, can you just explain what intermediate care facility and an IVD level of care means?
So an ICF is an institution.
Like a nursing home or...
No, well, full-fledged institution. It could be, or are the nursing home facilities, but, so there's different facilities in Kentucky that provide those. And you have to apply to be a partner, and then it's like you just have to get a situation, get a place in there. So, and there's even places for children.
And you have to, in order to qualify for some of the waivers, you have to have, you have to be at that institution level of care, which means if Clayton was not receiving services, if I wasn't around, if I wasn't there, no one to care for him, he would be more than likely in an institution without those services. Because his IQ is very low.
What's IID stand for? Do you all remember?
Intellectual, probably.
No, it's IID Level of Care. I've never heard that term.
I'm trying to think what it's, I'll have to get back with Dylan after. So, so some of these have had changes recently. Like the home and community base has had some changes. Is there anybody in here that has that waiver?
No, but I know somebody that's on it.
So there've been a lot of changes about family...
So elderly also.
Family being able to provide services, and also about the PDS rate. So the rate has changed, so there's been a lot of controversy on that. There was a public comment period for the Michelle P waiver, and that has already came and passed. They told us it was going to be a placeholder, so they were hoping to have another waiver in place. But at the council, we still commented on the things and the concerns that we had because that placeholder will be a waiver after the comment period. And so I haven't heard anything else on that. We always put updates on the Facebook page, something going on, so that you'll know that it's passed, or there's questions, or there's another comment period opportunity, any of those things. So in the comment period, a lot of times, like Protection and Advocacy will come through a bill, and they'll, because that's our legal representation in the state for people who have intellectual developmental disability, and they will post information on their website that tells you what they're concerned about. Doesn't mean it's all your concerns, but it's a good place to look for legal information because you don't have an attorney who's going to come through all those things for you and tell you, "This is where we're concerned." So that's a good place to look. And so we often have conversations together, and Estelle and I talk about what are we worried about, because we all kind of, really, our comments probably mirror each other, because we're looking out for the whole population of people, not just our families. We're looking out for everybody.
Can I say something about the home and community-based waiver?
Sure.
I've got a friend that's on the home and community-based waiver, and he uses a wheelchair, and therefore he requires somebody to get him out in and out of bed in the morning and do a few other things for him. But once he can get in his wheelchair and get dressed and everything, he's pretty self-sufficient. But he, you know, and I don't know if you're going to explain consumer-directed auction if we need to get into that detail, but you can either choose to get your services through an agency, or you can do consumer-directed auction, which means you hire your own people. Well, here's what happened to them recently, and this is why I'm so concerned about the Michelle P waiver and the other waivers. So he got a budget based on his needs, and with that budget, he hires his own people and, you know, does all the paperwork and everything. And based on his budget and the amount of care he needed, he was paying $15 an hour. But what they did when they, when they changed, when they did the revamp or whatever, they actually put a cap on the amount he was allowed to pay. Two, 10, no, 10, I think it's 10, 10 an hour. So he's, all these people that, you know, if you can imagine 14 times a week, you need somebody to come over, how many people you have to have to do that. So all these people, he hired them at $15 an hour, but they were supposed to be paid. So this is why this is really important.
Well, let me chime in on that one, too, because my support broker told me that they are paying very, very closely to everybody's budget. So I was getting ready to do a modification to not, to basically planning care because we were going to add additional hours to his behavioral specialist. She said, "If we do that, like, we would have to...
Yeah, they spent here on the other hours, yeah.
We have to lessen the amount of pay, or we could keep the same amount of pay, and then then we would have half the hours. And so she said, "If I was to do that," they did a modification to his budget, "that chances are my budget going back to the way that it is now."
They would reduce the amount?
They would reduce the amount. I would never get the budget and the amount of pay.
So never change your plan of care.
You can't get more than 40 hours of service and that's what a waiver is.
Well, 36 is what I get. And then you get, and then, you know, it was $19 an hour, so going from $19 an hour to $12.50, that's a huge, you know.
Because you added those other supports on there, which were taking your money, taking some of the money from the budget.
So if, even if we changed the amount of hours that the behavioral specialist used, if we went back from six to four, I still would never, like we couldn't get $19 an hour again and still say it's $12.50. She said that they're really capping, like, everybody.
But see, and here's why that's not right and I don't want to take a few minutes of time for this, but.
Maybe you can talk a little more about that. Stella and I have some thoughts on that too. So, that might be good.
Thing that's kind of confusing is so many different agencies say one thing, you could go to your agency and they're going to tell you that, but my agency will tell me something totally different. So that's the thing that's, you know, very confusing for families too.
There's an opportunity to apply for exceptional services where you want to pay a higher rate for a service that is a more advanced needed service, so there's, there's other options, maybe not telling you about. So, see if you can hit us the next slide. Future Medicaid. That's the only category.
That's all you have.
Back to reality, okay. So, so everybody knows what the ACA is and then we have American Healthcare Act, which, look, he's holding it right here. We actually got a nice copy of that because they leaked it everywhere.
We saw a copy, fresh off the print.
Yeah, so, so basically, now what has happened is the House has voted, they, they put, they put all their stipulations in and it's headed to the Senate. But the Senate, from what we're hearing from Washington, is that they're planning to write their own. They are going to use Springboard is what they're calling it. They're going to use what's already been written as a Springboard, but doesn't mean they're going to include one part of it. But it, but what they're going to be doing is writing their own and then it'll either go back to the House or it could go to a conference committee. So if it goes to conference committee, that'll be a membership of House and Senate and they'll come together and see if they can merge those two. So, so that's really, really just where it's at right now, so.
I will tell you this, I looked up, you can go on a website, I don't have the link handy, but you can go on a website and see how, how everyone voted and the bill passed by four votes, I believe. Four Kentucky folks voted no.
Four voted no.
No, four voted yes, I'm sorry. Four voted yes. So I was thinking about that, I was like, "Oh my goodness, those four voted." So that just shows you how important those votes are, you know, four votes would have made, you know, well, I think the Vice President didn't have to go in and do it.
And there's people up for reelection this year.
Yeah.
He's bad enough.
He's good at those town hall meetings.
Yes, and now, now they're in the committees doing town hall meetings, so go, go, go. Show up whether they like it or not, you know, they're not going to like what you have to say, but go. But go, you know, so, I don't know how you feel. So, so we don't have any more information other than that. I will tell you that on dates, if you follow the council, and I make sure Stella and I work really close on dates, that we know, like when the House had it in session, we did not post anything extra on our Facebook page. I am working on a policy listserv, so we're going to give anybody that's been in our Medicaid meetings an opportunity to be a part of that. Stella's got some things going on, so we're trying to work about how we can provide the best information out because some people are on Facebook all day and some people aren't. Some people don't like email, some people do. But I think if you really want the information and it's like that, like the day that, that they were meeting, I was updating. Every time I got an update, I was putting an update on there. And so I was pinning the latest to the top. But it was just, if you fill Facebook up with all kinds of creativity that day, then you can't find, you can't find the information, so that's what's.
Can you say what your Facebook page is?
Um, it's the Commonwealth Council on Developmental Disability and I don't know.
You can just, you can just type that in.
Yeah, you just type it in.
I mean, I've been there before.
Yeah.
And then the Ark of Kentucky, you can like that page too.
And Stella and I work together, so whatever's on one is on the other, so definitely, I mean, we, we work really close together when we're, we're trying to make sure that you get information.
And what we do too is we make sure that the right information's going out because don't believe everything you read.
Can you say the name of that again, Commonwealth?
Commonwealth Council on Developmental Disabilities. And then the Ark of Kentucky's state website, I'll throw a check, I'm sure the chapter's probably posted on there too.
But there's certain groups, you know, that we follow and trust.
Right, and, and that is true. And so, so we're going to talk a little more about this, but, but like I said, it's about trusted places. I think that's where you're going to be getting your good information and you want to have good information, not something that people are just saying, and sometimes it's out of anger or it's political and that's not going to help you. So if you can hit the next slide. In Kentucky, there's, there's a couple of things going on and I know that it seems like it does not relate, but it really does. The income tax session is this fall, there's a lot of things tied to that you can't even imagine. I'm actually working through some of it right now going, "How's that there?" But we're going to have more information about that. Stella, I'm sure we'll, we'll work on that some and get information out to everybody. But then we have a budget session, so a lot going on.
So that's the longer session.
Yes, but, so what I'm saying to you is don't stop advocating, start now and I'm going to tell you for the next year of your life, your story, you need to know it and own it because you need to be able to say that five-minute elevator speech if you're with a legislator or they've given you a few minutes. Let them know that you are a resource to them and tell your story. Take your story, take the person, whoever has this ability, take them to meet the legislators because they need to know who these people are because they, they are looking at Medicaid as numbers and they don't see faces. So if you can hit the next slide. So it's really important, like I said, that you, you do advocacy. And then the next slide, it's people. We've got to, we've got to turn this back. It's been money. We've talked about money, we've talked about, we tried to talk political, the people would say, "Well, you voted for this one, you made the problem." Well, no, they didn't. They really didn't make the problem. The problem came along after. And so, so I don't believe that we need to push it as a political issue, I think we're just going to hurt our entire state. And so, I'm going to give you the perfect example, my brother's going to shoot me if I don't quit giving this one, but my brother is a coal miner and he wanted his job back so bad because he needs to feed his family. So I'm pretty sure I know how my brother voted, but I also know that my brother and his family need to survive. And so do I, did he think that how he voted was going to impact Will? It's probably the last thing on his mind because nobody was thinking Medicaid when that was going on. So, so just keep that in mind, is people are just trying to survive, just like we all are, and they had a reason for doing it and it was not to hurt people. It was not to, my brother would never hurt my son, they look just like, they look like twins, I swear to you. So there's no way he'd hurt his little mini twins, so, so I know that, but it's, it's just, I think that's something that we're going to have to make sure that we overcome in our state, is put, put people back to it. So the next slide, this is my favorite, is what are you going to do? You need to put a face on Medicaid. You need to tell your story. Some people have told their story a thousand times and they think it still doesn't have value, but guess what, it really does. We had an opportunity to decorate the tunnel and Stella's Advocates in Action, this is Will, he was an advocate in action. And we're going to, if you look on Stella's, I'm going to post it on the Ark because when I go to DC, it's my personal work, not my council work. And so Will's going to make a sign that says, "This advocate is in action." And we're going to have that in DC when we're there. So, so created these posters telling their stories about how important Michelle P. waiver, active part of my community. And Jay has a really pretty poster and I made a bunch of these for the, the pad board for PNA and we, we called that exhibit, "We Are All Kentucky" because at the time, it was, it was just said, "We Are Kentucky" was a phrase that was used a lot. And, and Will said, "What about me? I'm Kentucky too." And so my kids came up with that, "We Are All Kentucky." So that's why we did that one. And then Stella, Stella said, "Well, I want to do that with my Advocates in Action." And they created these and we got such great compliments on the posters. We put 54 posters, 54 stories, people's faces hung in the tunnel between the Capitol and the Annex and it was great. So we have that reserved two times in this next session. So we have January and we also have March for developmental disabilities.
Our next Advocates in Action class will be doing it again.
When is that again?
We meet, our first one will be in, in November, I think it's the second and third, I can't remember when. It's the first Thursday and Friday and, no, Friday, Saturday, excuse me, in November. Then we'll meet again in January with, we do it again with 874K Rally and then.
Yeah, it's in January, it's right now. We don't think it's going to change, it's going to be the 31st of, of January.
And the great thing is the Ark pays for all your expenses, your hotel, everything. You just have to fill out the application, sign up and we, we take about 25. It'll be in Frankfurt.
And so Stella brings in lots of resources, people to help empower you. They write a master advocacy plan. Will just informed me that he's changing his because it's going to be all about DC now because we didn't know we were going back there.
He's on a deadline.
So, yeah, I know, I know, I told him it has to be done tonight, so. Yeah, I'm like, can I get that done? So, so my kids really loved it. Both my kids went this year. And my daughter, it was huge for her because she had really not done much advocacy, really hadn't put herself in that forefront and she is just doing great things now, educating people about Erving-Stenhouse syndrome. She's had a pretty major setback recently and hasn't been really happy, it's been kind of rough, like almost two months setback. But everybody has those things happen, it's her only one in six years. So I keep reminding her, people have surgery all the time, so. So we, we have to keep telling the stories and don't get tired of telling them, it's yours, you own it. I heard somebody say one day that we're grieving, that's why we keep telling them and I don't really think that's it. I think that we've, we've been empowered and, and if you're not empowered, call me and I'll try to work on that for you. Because I want you to be empowered because your story is really important and everybody has one. So it's not cookie cutter, Medicaid is not cookie cutter. Your services are not cookie cutter, what my son gets, your family member may not get. And so, so we definitely need to have everybody telling their different stories.
And we gave you a little template in your packet, so you have a little template of what you can, how you can create your own story and also a little thing because of Medicaid, which is real important. And then we gave you a smaller version, this was Clayton's story that we made into a big poster too, but just a smaller version for you to have as an example. And you really want to highlight those key words, you know, support, Medicaid, all of that because that makes a huge difference.
We probably should tell a little bit more about what's in that packet.
And also that, that poster is just an eight and a half by 11 paper blown up, right?
Yes.
So that's something you can print out, copy it and talk to your legislature, you can email it to them.
Yes.
It's really handy to have.
That's what we did. When, when the Advocates in Action class met, when we went to the Capitol, we scheduled visits, that was one of their assignments, they had to schedule visits with their legislators. And we each of them gave a copy of their story and we practiced it, we worked on it, kind of worked on their elevator speech. So when they made those appointments, they went in and told their story and then left them a copy of their story.
So each one went to their different senator or representative?
It was awesome, yes, it was great.
So, there's a little sheet, little fact sheet, we worked with Picture and Advocacy a little and stole Jeff's image. He told me I could borrow this, so I borrowed it and put it everywhere. But there's a lot of information. He should have invited us to that first meeting.
We all borrowed it. I didn't even look to see if it had a copyright.
It didn't. So, yeah, they put one on it, so. But if you have any questions, you've got our contact information, there's information on how to contact your congressman in here as well. If you have anything to say, if you need help with state, you can, you can contact people, one of us, we've won the rights to help make sure you're getting in touch with them.
And we tried to put some of the most recent information in there, that, that some of the handouts that we gave you all, those are the, you know, we follow the Ark of the US, they're very, very big on advocacy and so of course I get their information first and we share it out. And there's a couple of other organizations that we follow that are really good and we try to give you some of that information so that you'll have some accurate stuff. And I would encourage you all, as you're sharing information, like we said, I can't say this enough, make sure that it's vetted and that you, you know it's, it's good information. Go to the trusted sites that we've shared with y'all tonight before you share stuff out because we just don't want wrong information to get out because this is a very big issue and you're going to push a lot of people's buttons when you do that. And my advice is not to argue about it, just state the facts and, you know, share how important it is for them to share their story. And I think you're going to get a lot more respect that way. I mean, there've been many times when I've had to type something really, really hateful and then delete it before I sent it. Because I'm like, hey, that will come back to haunt you Stella, if you not send that. But it's just real important that you share, you know, when you've got accurate information, you state facts, you're going to get a lot more respect from people and you're going to get a lot more, you know, they're going to, they're going to come on board eventually, hopefully. My husband and I, we, we've had many differences in conversations about this and I think he's finally understanding now because he was very confused about all the different waivers, even though our son is on one. It's still very confusing for him. So it does involve that education, even with your family, so that they understand what's going on. Did you want to share your?
Well, I tried to plan ahead and make this handout of different ways that I personally use to contact my legislators. I didn't quite get done with it, but I emailed it to her, so.
I can't, I can't.
I think I can, I can email to everybody here with that, but, so I'll just tell you the ways that I did it. So I've got my cellphone here and I went into my contacts and I added contacts for all my, my legislators, I don't know if you can see this, but I put an A in the front because I would always be at the top of my alphabetical list. So I've got Andy Barr in his DC office and Andy Barr in Lexington, I got the same, that's my representative, I don't know if everybody in there has him for representative, he's a Lexington guy. And then I've got Mitch McCollum, Rand Paul, their DC numbers and their, some of their staff offices, their state offices. Rand Paul, he's a hard man to get in touch with, let me tell you. But he, though, sometimes if they won't answer a DC, it'll answer both of them. So, and then the one I've got down here, my, the one, I put two As back because it's Kentucky, so it's a little bit below. There's a Kentucky Legislative Message Line and it's a, what is it, 800-3, oh, I could just, just look here. 800, and these people are awesome.
They are awesome.
And I think they answered all year, but I don't, I'm not sure, but when, when the, when we're in session in January and February and March and proper April this year, they answered more than 11 times. You can call them up, they're very polite. Oh, they're usually, they're always ladies, I've never heard a man.
Hey Patty, could you send that to the listserv so that people who are watching this can find it?
Yeah, to ASBG.
Yeah, just send it to asbg@yahoogroups.com.
Got it. So that's one way I do it, sometimes I'll just call them up. And there, but there's a couple of apps that I've found lately. One of them is called 5calls.org, you can find that online, 5calls.org. And it allows you to, they have a list of topics on the left-hand side and you click on one you want to talk about and it'll pull up facts about it and it'll say, so some of them you need to call your senators and some of them you need to call your representatives. It'll give you numbers to call, if their DC number is busy, just click, you know, local numbers, call one of those and then at the bottom you just say, "Make contact with the message line." Now, one thing I will say about 5calls and I'm, I'm not trying to be political, it is a progressive site, so some of the things they might put on the side is like, you know, call for a special counsel for, what's his name?
Yeah.
The whole Russia-Trump thing. But you don't have to say that in your message, you can say whatever you want. So I'm just saying, this is a resource, but I'm not trying to influence what topics you pick or anything, but there's usually about 10 different topics.
What was the one you told us about three weeks ago?
What?
What was the one you told us about two weeks ago?
And then, that's when I was getting ready, so the, the third thing is called Resistbot and I believe the number is 504, 50409. I've got it on my hand now, but, yeah, you can look it up. It also has a website, Resist, just look up Resistbot.
50409.
50409, so all you do is you key in 50409 and you write Resist in the subject and then it'll come on and say, "Well, hello there, nice to meet you, what would you like to..." And so at the beginning, it just lets you send an email, I think, to your senators and the more you do it, it'll ask you more to try to find who your representative is. Basically, you have to give them your Resist code. Anyway, that, what Resistbot does is it generates a fax instead of two. So, now Rand Paul does not have his fax machine turned on, but the other ones, you know, they're going to get a paper, they're going to say, you know, they're probably, and I would not spend a lot of time saying this kind of thing, writing down stuff, because they're going to either say, you know, "Supports" or "No support." And then, so those are my three main ways other than writing letters, the one pager and visiting.